Everybody ready? It is ten o'clock, we'll go ahead and call our meeting order, and if you would, I'll rise to the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. Follow.
Flag the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand for a moment of silence, please. Welcome everybody out this morning. Jury cloudy day. Okay, we got to amend the agenda down in presentations to the board. Facilities update, Mr. David Spicer, he won't be with us today, his, his mother passed away and, and he's taking care of that, but let's all keep him in our prayers and thoughts. So, go ahead, motion to accept this change.
I do.
On favor? Bobby's not with us today, he had a blowed a big tree down up at his house and messed his electricity up and stuff up there. Okay, we'll open the floor for public comment. Anyone wish to say anything, have anything to say now's the time. Seeing no movement, we'll close public comment. Moving on down to constant, constant, constant agenda, Ms. Rita Miller.
Good morning, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
If you have any questions about the collection of bachelor's report. Not entertain a motion to accept.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? For who?
Thank you.
Thank you. This is case of the board, Wilkes Community College, Dr. Mike Rogers.
While she's pulling the presentation up and getting that started, first and foremost, thank y'all for letting me be here and really appreciate the opportunity to come out. But not just to come out and present to you, but come out and tell you that, um, your support is one thing that, that we can't convey thanks enough to because what we're able to do up here at the Allegheny Center and do for the people in this area has just been great. I know, uh, without your support, we could not do it, um, but we're glad to be here, glad to have, uh, Ms. Wanda back. She is over the Allegheny Center and does a fine job for us. And, um, that's one thing I don't worry about when Wanda's, uh, Wanda's in the house and then Wanda's got things moving, so her and Talina and the whole team. Also want to thank, uh, Vice Chairman Ricky Brown and, um, uh, Board Member Susan Murphy for being here today as well. So, thank y'all for being here and, uh, glad to meet you all this morning. So, um, I'll get started, um, and you know, we're going to run through this, uh, kind of share with you the college. Many of you know the college, but kind of give you an update. Um, I've been on the job for just under ten months now. Uh, came from, uh, originally born and raised in South Carolina, spent ten years in the South Carolina community technical college system. And, um, spent the last thirteen years in Kentucky and had a wonderful opportunity to come down here and lead Wilkes Community College. And, um, during the interview, one of the first places, uh, we stopped for lunch was Muddy Creek. And I had lunch with, uh, uh, the folks and, uh, the, the administrative council, just had a good time and then they showed me around. And it was, uh, a little breezy that day, a little cool, and, uh, just like it is out here this morning. Not quite as cold today, but I'll tell you what, I figured out real quick, this is a beautiful place and I was, uh, riding up this morning, coming up the hill, coming up twenty-one, actually. Come up through Oklahoma Road and come up twenty-one and it's, if you just take a minute to get out, you'll see, we'll see what we have here. So, I'll get started if y'all are, if you're ready. Um, get the presentation started, if not. I apologize, I can't read a small print on there, there we go. We got it. You are fine, you are fine, we're good to go. So, um, if you got any questions as we're going through this, just let me know and, uh, can you see that? Yep, there we go, alright. That's good for me, if it's good for you all. Alright, if you'll move on to the next slide. So, Wilkes Community College mission is to empower individuals with knowledge and skills to transform our lives and enrich our communities through accessible lifelong education, workforce development, and community engagement. I look, look at that as a, um, three-legged stool. And what I mean by that is, is we've got a transfer side, we've got a career and technical side, and we've got a workforce development side. And not only do we serve all three of those here in Allegheny County, with your support, we serve all three of those across all the counties we serve. But our vision is to provide programs, resources, and services that create a quality educational economic development and cultural opportunities for all learners. And, um, we're, we're aspiring to be an effective learner center, an educational institution, and a dynamic learning organization. So, with that being said, I wanted to share this mission with you, the vision and the values, to be learner-centered. Provide integrity and respect, compassion, equity and accessibility, continuous improvement, and collaboration and engagement. This was, uh, or is our mission now, it was just approved, fall of twenty twenty-four. And every five years, we go through and we look at our mission based on, uh, policy and procedure, not only at Wilkes Community College, but through SAC C O C. That's the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges. They require that we review our mission periodically and our policy now states that we review it every five years, uh, to make sure that we're truly serving the individuals, uh, in the, in the communities and, and making sure we're staying focused on a high-quality education and the learners and the business and industry. And you'll see a lot in our presentation about collaboration. Collaboration is key to what we do, we can't do it alone, we've got to have your support, we've got to have the business and industry support. We got to have the support throughout the community and that's why we're here, um, community is in our name and we're here to serve, so. So, our focus, as I said before, is academic excellence through a quality education. We are right now in the middle of our SAC C O C reaffirmation and our Q E P, our Quality Enhancement Plan Development. Um, SAC C O C reaffirmation occurs every ten years, you go through a five-year, uh, mid, mid-review, midpoint review. But every ten years, you go through a decennial reaffirmation. We just submitted on March one, our compliance report, and we are awaiting the off-site review of that now. And then, uh, based on their report, we will do a follow-up report to them, answer any questions in anticipation for the onsite committee to be here September sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth. So, uh, the, uh, team of individuals will come in and they will review every aspect of our organization on, and look at, basically making sure we're saying, we're doing, we're doing what we say we're doing and, um, making sure that we're still providing a high-quality education. So, right now, everything's looking really good, they will visit all three sites, plus many of our, um, uh, off-campus instructional sites. The enrollment management plan, we are in the process now with developing an enrollment management plan and that it will be a five-year plan. Uh, that will tee us up to maintain, uh, focus on the high school student currently, grow the high school matriculation, uh, rate from the high school graduation to us and serve the adult learner. There's many adults in our service territory that have, uh, some are no, uh, college credential or skill, uh, skilled credential, that's industry-recognized. And therefore, uh, this plan is, will be laser-focused on that for the next five years, but it will not be a plan that is static, it will be one that changes and develops as we goes. We, or where as we go, we have key performance indicators that we have identified. And, uh, we are solidifying those now and that plan will be launched in July of this year, uh, with full rollout, uh, August when, uh, the August semester or fall semester starts. And then we will be developing a strategic plan inclusive of all stakeholders. They are in this order because our Quality Enhancement Plan and our SAC C O C reaffirmation, our Quality Enhancement Plan is based around, uh, workplace communication. We have heard from students, faculty, staff, the community as a whole and business and industry that workplace communication is very important and it bubbled to the top. So, that is our focus for our Quality Enhancement Plan. And, uh, it is in process with a full launch this fall as well. But the Quality Enhancement Plan, the SAC C O C reaffirmation, and the Enrollment Management Plan will, done properly, morph into our, uh, five-year strategic plan. So, we're well on track for those, uh, we're maintaining learner success by being a learner-centric, uh, college. We're meeting the learners where they are and taking them to where they want and need to be. A lot of places, uh, we want to go as individuals, that's where we want to go, but may not be where we need to be. It's our goal to make sure we're working with these individuals to provide them the most information possible to make sure we're all headed in the right direction together. And again, I said, we're focused on the adult learner, but we're not going to lose sight of the high school learner. Um, we want to increase, uh, our outreach to the adult student and a lot of that is changing the way we schedule coursework, uh, so that they can come to school and not have to attend five days a week, but still maintain and get a quality education. We're also looking at enhanced career mobility and therefore, uh, we're, uh, looking at ways to provide increased stackable pathways and transfer opportunities. Most community colleges or, uh, colleges in general, uh, are known for transfer, uh, for the A A and the A S program, Associate in Arts and Associate in Science. But when you look at the quality of our Associate and Applied Science programs, our Career and Technical Education programs, there's no reason they cannot transfer as well. Uh, we have, uh, just this past fall, signed a transfer agreement for A S programs to transfer to East Carolina. Uh, we're increasing transfer opportunities for App State, but we've also signed agreements with East Tennessee State. We just signed the largest agreement with East Tennessee State at one time that they've ever signed where fourteen of our Associate and Applied Science programs will transfer. So, now, if student comes in and they want an Associate in Arts, Associate in Science, and now a Career and Technical Path and Associate in Applied Science, they can transfer. So, we're increasing opportunities for everybody across the board. Community engagement, understanding and facilitating and strengthening community partnerships is key to that. But we're not only increasing faculty and staff partnerships and looking at the culture, uh, we just launched a PACE survey to make sure the culture of the college is, uh, viewed, looked at, and improved moving forward, not saying we've got a bad culture, but you, you've always got to look at continuous improvement. So, that PACE survey is launched, we will be compiling the data and looking at ways to further support our faculty and staff and improving those partnerships. The school system partnerships, I was just, um, two weeks ago with, uh, Missy Weaver here, the superintendent, but also the superintendent from Ash and, uh, Wilkes County, uh, we were at a superintendent's convening in Greensboro. Those system-wide partnerships are key to make sure that we're in their institutions and they're, uh, connected with us, so our students are their students, their students are our students, and we're making sure we're all working together. Business and Industry Partnerships, if you look around, um, Allegheny County, there's a lot of entrepreneurs here. And we want to continue growing that and continue moving that forward, so our Small Business Development Center is working real good with that and in, improving and increasing opportunities every day. Individual community members, we're working with, uh, individual community members to make sure that they're in tune to what we're doing and we're trying to, uh, improve our messaging, so, because uh, we want to make sure that y'all know what we're doing, uh, because, like I said before, community is in our name, we're Wilkes Community College, uh, and we want to make sure that we're, we're serving you all. And then learner partnerships, students are going to be centered to everything we do. Alright, give you a few updates. So, based on a three-year average, our curriculum enrollment, unduplicated for the, for, for the year, uh, is about three thousand, a little over three thousand students. That generates about two thousand, a little over two thousand F T E, full-time equivalent, and F T E is what we are funded from the state on. So, when you add workforce in, you add another, uh, fifty-three hundred head count, uh, another seven hundred and sixty-eight F T E. So, when you look at overall F T E on the average, uh, is about twenty-eight hundred F T Es and about eighty-four hundred average enrollment. Again, that's split between curriculum and workforce development. Most of the time when we talk about enrollment, you hear us talk about curriculum and vote enrollment, but workforce enrollment is just as important because with one college model, there's no reason that, uh, students or, uh, learners coming in, uh, achieving, uh, industry-recognized credentials. Sometime they may decide to go back and get a college credential, so there needs to be a way for that to transfer over. Um, we offer thirty-nine, uh, plus programs, we're looking at additional programming now. Eighty-three percent of our graduates are employed within one year of graduation and, uh, more than five million in the financial aid is distributed annually. I am also proud to say that on April third, we will be traveling to, uh, Raleigh, uh, to receive along with GE Aerospace, the Pinnacle Award for Workforce Development. We presented that project, uh, for approval in October of twenty twenty-four, and that project was also submitted to the state, uh, for the Pinnacle Award in Innovative Leadership in Workforce Development, and I'm proud to say we actually won that award. So, it made us feel really good, um, just excited about the opportunities there. I'll also tell you, when you look at our transfer out rate and our success rate in transfer, the students that start out at Wilkes Community College and transfer, their success rate is ninety-point-six percent. So, when they leave us and transfer out, and that success means completion, successful completion of one-year to four-year university, or graduation from a four-year university, that's ninety-point-six percent. That's strong. Persistence rate from last fall to this spring is eighty-point-four percent. Eighty-four, four, four, no, eighty-point-four percent of our students persist from fall to spring. Fall to fall is retention, so we're looking at not only improving that persistence number, but also that retention number. And that tells me that we're doing something right when we're providing the wraparound services for our students. The, uh, working with the students on an individual basis through Trojan tracks, Wanda's very, uh, tuned into that. Also, Talina Pipes up here at Allegheny works with our students and she is getting ready to present, I heard this morning, on a, uh, regional level at App State. The partnership that, uh, she's working with the, the high school students, um, resume writing, um, skill building, um. So, that, that tells you the quality of program that we have here and we want to continue it, so. Alright, uh, we just, uh, are in the process of North Carolina reconnect, working with them to achieve, uh, credential completion rates or raise credential completion, completion rates across our service territory. But we have reached out to twenty-eight hundred students since fall of twenty twenty-two and brought two hundred and eighty of those back. Seventy-five of those have earned a hundred and thirty-three credentials, that number continues to increase and we're going to continue that project moving forward. As you all know, education promised, we have free tuition for eligible high school graduates, that's based off of a program with the Allegheny, Allegheny Educational Foundation. Merle Fest is coming up, hopefully, we'll see you all there. Got a great lineup this year and you know, that continues to support students in all three of our counties as well. It is on the Wilkes-Barre campus, April twenty-fourth through the twenty-seventh. We are expanding our construction and electrical programs, uh, through a Lowe's Gable Grant, uh, we had over five hundred thousand awarded from the Lowe's, uh, Foundation to expand construction technology. We're looking at opportunities on all three campuses to improve, uh, educational offerings. And Wanda, I believe you and Ronald have been touring the facility up here, H V A C, trying to, uh, increase our H V A C program. And up here, as you all know, if you've tried to hire a plumber and H V A C tech, we all need them. So, uh, we'd received two hundred thousand from a Lowe's Gable Grant to expand our, um, look at expansion of our welding program, we will be expanding the welding labs in Wilkes County, but also, I am proud to say that we have, uh, through a partnership with the, um, high school here, we will be expanding our C C P, uh, welding offerings here. So, we'll be able to provide welding classes to additional students here, our welding classes are here taught by Mark Day, they're full, they're, uh, very high-quality. Students receive jobs after that, and one of our graduates from here, uh, was just, um, recognized in a, uh, presentation through P B S about, uh, his achievements and, and the work we're doing to make sure, as I said before, we're staying learner-centric, so we're proud of that expansion. We also had an A R C grant of three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars to, uh, support expansion as well. We were ranked number seven this past, uh, uh, fall by Smart Asset, losing an advisor marketing platform compared six hundred and sixteen two-year schools that offer associate degrees, have at least five hundred full-time enrollees, but they looked at retention rates, student to faculty ratio, and tuition and fees to determine the best community colleges in the U S. And Wilkes Community College is number seven in the nation. So, uh, one good thing to be number seven, we just got to work hard to stay there. As, uh, some people say, we, there's some room to move up, so we're going to keep moving. We just hosted Skills USA on, uh, the campus and we had five hundred and thirty-three students come in in February, uh, to highlight career and technical education and participate in a skills competition through Skills USA. Skills USA has been around for sixty years and so has Wilkes Community College, so it was a great partnership this year. And over seventy advisors came in, but we also had advisors and schools come in that did not participate, looking to, uh, participate in future years. So, many of these students will move on to the state competition and they, uh, hopefully, uh, depending on where they rank at the state, they'll get a chance to go to Nationals in Atlanta and, uh, represent, uh, Wilkes-Ash and Allegheny County. So, um, we were also highlighted, as I said before, in the P B S North Carolina Impact Economic Development episode about how W C C is transforming lives to education. But that was an Allegheny student, so if you get a chance, look that up, I think you'll be pleased with the, your representation there, so. Um, new programs, I talked about it, our addition of new programs, and we will be bringing Heavy Equipment Operator online, fall twenty twenty-five, located on the Wilkes-Barre campus. Uh, but it, we're bringing it back in a different format, we're bringing it back in a two-day-a-week option that leads to two certificates and an opportunity for diploma. Um, two-day-a-weeks, two, two days a week, uh, they will be on campus, um, and on job sites that we're working to establish, uh, with property owners. Uh, and they will be learning to operate safely and efficiently, heavy equipment. If you look at every, uh, heavy plumbing job, construction job, foundations, there's a piece of heavy equipment, landscaping, a piece of heavy equipment, road work. If you look at the hurricane, Helene impact, a lot of heavy equipment involved. So, that is a needed program and we're moving it forward in the fall. Also, in the fall, we'll be opening the dental hygiene program. We have, um, over a hundred applicants right now for the dental hygiene program, that's went up since the last time we talked, Ricky. And, uh, we've got sixteen slots, we will have the dental hygiene program, open August of twenty twenty-five, and in January, we will have the dental hygiene clinic and facility open. So, students will be learning in a live, project-based environment. We will be, and I told you, a hundred students right now, applied for sixteen positions, but we'll be working diligently to figure, diligently to figure out how not to lose those other eighty-four students. Are there other programs we could put them in until we can get them moved over to dental hygiene and so forth? Right now, if you drop a pin within a fifty-mile radius, um, there's thirty-six full-time job openings, but also, the closest program to us is fifty-five miles. And, um, there is a big need here, um, our dental assisting program's going well, many of those students have the opportunity to continue on at dental hygiene. And we're just excited to get that moving. Electrical systems began fall twenty twenty-four, uh, we're looking now, uh, as I said before, H V A C, that ties into electrical up here, but we're trying to determine if there's a way to increase our electrical offerings here as well, um, but that is a diploma program and we will be expanding into commercial electrical fall twenty twenty-five, we've got thirty-four students enrolled right out of the gate in that program. Offered a medical assisting pathway, which is a flex path model where the students come to school on Friday and Saturday. It is at our Herring Hall campus, but it does have a lot of, uh, online coursework presence, uh, involved as well, but the short-term options tailored to the working professional. We rolled that out to, um, Hugh Chatham, uh, first, in the first information session, then we rolled it out second to, um, Books Regional, and then it'll be rolled out, it's actually already been rolled out to Ash, um, as of last week, I believe, uh, Ash, Ash Memorial. Um, but, uh, the first information session, uh, garnered thirty applications and we enrolled back two students out of it. So, it is full and tells me that there's a need for a flex path. Again, I talked about construction and welding expansion, but we're shifting, uh, collision repair to a three-day-a-week model, which leads to certificates and I car certification for the auto body industry. We're also a center for academic, academic excellence, which is a, um, National Security Agency, N S A designation in cybersecurity education. And all of our students have an opportunity to participate in that if they so choose and they have an I T, a interest and, uh, want to achieve an I T credential. We're also looking to bring back, uh, I'll say bring back because it's been many years since we had a commercial driver's license training opportunity as well. And we're looking at some learn and earn, train it options, uh, for business and industry around a, a polite engineering and technology department. So, that's a mouthful when you look at all those new programs, um, and, but I'm telling you, we've got some great opportunities here and I would not be, uh, I'll just tell you, I, I wouldn't want to be anywhere else. So, uh, we do have some challenges and opportunities, as I say, I look at all our, our challenges as opportunities because I think working together, we can get through anything, so. We have an increased opportunity to serve the adult learner and I told you about working with my future N C, uh, who is, that project's, uh, statewide, currently at one point, six million adult learners towards reaching that goal, but if you look at that and break it down to our service territory, there's fifty-six thousand adults without a college credential, some form of college, credential or, or workforce credential in our area. Uh, so, we're looking at learn and earn models, but we're also looking at credit for prior learning models, and that means, um, I call them our star skill through alternative resources. These folks may have a background, but no formal education, is there a way to transfer any of that knowledge over to college credit? And, uh, get them ahead of the game moving forward. We're looking at employee retention, uh, we are always fighting, uh, the private sector for on competitive salaries and we have a continued focus on culture and a strong morale and we will not take our eyes off of that. Uh, we're also trying to improve persistence and retention, uh, and credentials leading to career and transfer, uh, but also on enrollment growth funding. As you all know, uh, this past year, we had, uh, our state budget was held up, uh, not for anything that the, Wilkes Community College or the North Carolina system did. We were in good favor with state legislatures, but we grew two hundred and thirty-five F T E last year and we're right now, we're up about sixty F T E this year. With that being said- With that being said, enrollment growth funding from the state is not guaranteed, they have to vote on it every cycle. So we get a base budget and as you know, we did not get our enrollment growth funding until end of December, or middle of December, when it was approved and it came in at the end of December this past year. So we're always trying to improve that relationship as well and because of that, I'll be in Raleigh a couple of days this week, working with the state legislative group, with folks from the rest of the system to make sure I'm supporting and working for you all in these three counties. And I've already told you about expanding the transfer agreement. So. So, how can you help? You can help us, the community can help us through increased engagement by partnering with us for internships, placements, advisor committees, serving on those, providing input because we want to make sure we're aligned with business and industry. If we're not aligned with business and industry, we're not relevant. You can lose relevance soon, real quick. If there's a new business coming to town and y'all are in discussions with them, let us be at the table, let us be at the table early because we can let them know and work with you all to make sure there's quality training and they know what training is there for them, but there's also training dollars available. Like you all know that, but just want to remind you of that. And career fairs and career opportunities, if there's something going on. Wanda just told me, we just had a career fair, we had over fifty vendor booths set up, that's phenomenal. And when you look at that, that tells you we're doing something right because people are are working and looking at this collaboration and knowing that they can get a quality employee from it. If there's any students, business or industry that you run across and they don't, they are wondering, you know, what type of training is offered? Or they're questioning what they may need, information's free, send them out to us. Be glad to give them a tour, we'll give them a tour here, we'll get them down to any other three sites depending on what we have. They're all different because they serve different populations and different communities, but any education, I look at education as being portable, it's also something you can't take away. So we want to make sure we can get, we're getting those folks onsite, talking to our people. There's any grant opportunities or partnerships that you want us to look at, please let us know, we want to be involved. And we want to make sure that, as I said before, the entrepreneurial spirit, we're working with the Wilkes-Barre Business Center because the expert connections, confidential one-on-one business counseling, the business resources and seminars and workshops that they provide is second to none. I will tell you that in addition to this, we, this is a positive. Wanda just sent me this information, told me that I needed to remind you and I would be remiss not to. But the Roan Gap Foundation has provided scholarships to both curriculum and workforce development students living in Allegheny County. So when we look at that, if there's folks that need to be involved, that aren't involved, that you see, hey, here's an opportunity, reach out to us, let us know, we want to make sure we're getting those folks connected to these dollars. And, and we, it's our goal and our job to break down barriers to education and that's an opportunity to do that. Also, in partnership with the county, as many of you all know, the WCC Allegheny Center is providing refreshments and tours during the BDC flag raising ceremony and open house on March twenty-eighth. And also with the Allegheny Chamber, we will be hosting Allegheny After Five on Thursday, June twenty-sixth with refreshments and tours. So we'd love to see you at one of those events and if there's anything that we could do, let us know, but I will also tell you that I can't thank you enough for your continued financial support and for the excellent upkeep in the building over there because it is, it looks real good, it's very warm and welcoming when you walk in and I just can't say enough about it. So. Leave you with this, education is the most powerful weapon we can use to change the world and better skills, better jobs, a better future. And I always say, all roads can lead to WCC. So. I'll open it up to questions.
About having questions, Dr. Rogers.
How many people did you say you had applied for your dental hygiene program?
Got a hundred applications right now.
And sixteen slots.
Sixteen slots. That's why we're working diligently to figure out, so we'll have a great pool to pull from, but we're working diligently to figure out, many of those may be able to start in a couple of open slots in dental assisting, but there also may be opportunities for them to go ahead and get their anatomy and physiology and the general education coursework that way.
Would there ever be any feasibility to maybe open an auxiliary program here at the Allegheny Campus to help with your overflow?
Potentially, if we could find the, the location, the site and put in, have the funding to put in the dental hygiene lab with the operatories. Normally you have to have one operator for every two participants. So we've got eight operators and those operators would have to have access to not only the standard dental equipment in a dental office, but X-ray radiography equipment and so forth. But yes, if there's ever a need, we would look at that. What we have to make sure of, and this was a question that was asked, I think, I believe, just maybe two weeks ago. The, we've got to make sure that if we had the space to do a hundred, to run a hundred students, that we don't want to outstrip the job market. So we want to make sure there's a balance, but any, I will tell you, any program that we can offer at any one of our sites, as long as the funding, the facilities, the instructional support, quality instructional support, and that means instructors as well as there and the students are there, we always entertain those. It will, just like the site that's at Wilkes through, it will be accredited through COTA, Commission on Dental Commission on Dental Accreditation. They are, they have to look at every site, so they have approved the plans for that site and it would be just simple to, to pick up almost duplicate that somewhere else if you had the funding and the resources and the students, natural. You can't outstrip the job market. Great question though, that question comes up a lot.
Appreciate you being here today and thank you, Wanda, Ricky and Susan for joining too.
Thanks. Well, I appreciate the opportunity. I know we've been trying to get on the agenda for a while and as Bill said, it'll work out what it's supposed to work out. So. If there's anything you need me back for, if there's any questions, I know we've already sent you our preliminary budget package, the final will be coming in, it was just approved and will be approved by the board, but we'll get that out to you as soon as the board meets April tenth. But I'm very pleased, like I said, to tell you that your just commitment to Wilkes Community College and your support is unwavering, it's just been phenomenal for us. So. Any other questions? I'll be glad to answer them or?
I've got a comment here, Dr. Rogers. Y'all got some impressive numbers there and the trade schools is making a big comeback, not only with you guys, but the high school and even into the middle school. That's a great thing. It's, it's a real problem, there's not enough trade school around and you've got a fine group behind you back there, the hip chat, the board trustees and all that over and we will certainly want to thank and look forward to partnering and doing our part.
We've got a great opportunity. Yes, we've got some great individuals behind me and I believe we will be reaching out to you all pretty quickly about continuing an appointment. It's coming up, maybe, maybe coming up mid-year. So thank you for your comments.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank y'all much.
Okay, recognition retirement, Tiffany Bowyer.
Good morning. I'm here today so that we can recognize Missy Smith. She retired on January first from the tax, from the tax office and she has provided twenty years of service to Allegheny County. I would like to ask her to come up and accept this plaque of appreciation and I'd also like to ask Rita Miller to come up, the tax administrator, she has a few things she'd like to add.
I just wanted to write down a few things. So Missy, never underestimate the lives you touched or the difference you made during your twenty years in the tax office. Have people ask where you are every day. Missy's service to the citizens of Allegheny began in December of twenty-four, two thousand and four. And she came in as an administrative assistant or a customer service in the assessing office. And in two thousand and fourteen, she was promoted to the deputy tax collector and that's the position from which she retired, January one. So during her twenty years, she received certifications from the Department of Revenue as a personal property appraiser and as a deputy tax collector. She performed her oftentimes difficult job responsibilities in the collection of taxes with professionalism, empathy and kindness. She received many compliments through the years, but there was one I actually put in your personnel file and hung on to for several years and I want to read this to you all. It's, "Thank you for your friendliness. When I stopped by to pay my taxes on my new property in Allegheny County, if you have to pay taxes, it sure helps to have a friendly person in the tax office." And that was a Mr. Jim Woodall from several years ago. So I wanted to remind you of that. So we miss you very much, but we miss you the happiest of retirements. Missy, as well as many of us in the tax office, are avid readers, so I wanted to say, enjoy this next chapter of your life, my friend. We miss you very much.
It's the own behalf of the county.
He's glad to have you home.
Thank you, guys.
National Update, Robin Hamilton.
Good morning. I've got the finance report and the sales tax together for all of y'all laid them out earlier. The year-to-date revenue is sixteen million, eight hundred, fifty thousand, seven hundred, seven dollars and fifty-five cents. That represents seventy-nine percent of our revenue for the year. The year-to-date expenditures are fourteen million, eight hundred, eighty thousand, seven hundred, two dollars and twenty-nine cents. And the expenditures are representing seventy percent of our budget year. The approved budget is twenty-one million, four hundred, seven thousand, let me start that over, twenty-one million, four hundred, seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. And that is represent, or we are into our budget year and seventy-one percent. Okay, on the sales tax, you have both this year and last year, year-to-date. The year-to-date sales tax for the sales and use is eight hundred, seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-five cents. Now, the quarter percent tax rate or tax amount is the two hundred, forty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighteen cents. Does anybody have any questions?
Question for comments. Good job, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're next, Garrison Wagner, workforce development.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's take a brief moment to go over of the board meetings that we had last week with the High Country Workforce Development Board and start out to get, these numbers are going to be from survey data completed from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-two and most recently updated in two thousand and twenty-three. So right now, our current population in Allegheny County is eleven thousand, seventy-five people. Civilian labor force of four thousand, five hundred and five with a participation rate of forty-seven point eight percent and at eleven thousand, seventy-five residents makes up forty-nine point four percent male and fifty point six percent female. And then as far as our median age in the county, the North Carolina median age is thirty-nine point one, the United States median age is thirty-eight point seven and Allegheny is fifty-one point four. Passed out packets to all you guys before we got started today, did have a presentation, but it didn't get uploaded in time, that's my fault. You can see there on the employment trends, that our employment increased up about four point four percent and our unemployment rate was in line with state and national averages. We come in at three point eight percent, North Carolina is three point four and the United States is three point nine. Further along in the packet, our cost of living index here in the county, you can see there at the bottom that the, the average for the United States is going to, that index is going to be over one hundred because that's the norm. North Carolina is ninety-four point zero index and Allegheny is ninety-one point two. So we're about nine points lower on the cost of living index as far as it measures to the United States, but our annual average salary is quite a bit lower. Briefly touch on our industry snapshot, the top three employment providers in Allegheny County was manufacturing at eighteen point nine percent, agriculture, forestry, fishing and hunting, eleven point eight percent and healthcare and social assistance at ten point seven percent. You will see on the right side, there, there, all of their categories added up was about twenty-two point four percent, but that's, that's the other category. And as far, and as far as how that relates to the GDP, again, there's actually had one replaced there in the top for GDP because the top GDP for Allegheny twenty-three was manufacturing, bringing in eighty-eight million dollars. And we had real estate rental and leasing at fifty million dollars and agriculture, forestry, fishing and hunting at thirty-seven million dollars. As you'll see closer to the back of your packet, there are two maps. One demonstrates where residents of Allegheny County, where they work, that's people who live here and those counties that have the numbers beneath them, those are the number of people that live here and work in that county. So some of the highest were Grayson County, sixty-four, Galak City, sixty-six, Surrey, seventy-six, Ash, sixty-seven, Forsyth, seventy-four, Mecklenburg, sixty-five, even some in Wake County and Guilford. That's what that map demonstrates. And then your second map is going to be workers in Allegheny County and where they live. So that number's going to be about the same for us, about three thousand workers again. But a lot of our workforce, you can see is clustered around that geographic, geographically surrounding areas. Grayson County, a hundred and eighty-two, Wilkes, Ash and Surrey with some high numbers, Ancar with some high numbers as well. So we have a lot of folks who are commuting to Allegheny to work. But that's, that's just a brief overview I wanted to provide the board with from our last meeting and we're happy to have Napco and Parkdale Mills back on the, the main board and we're well, we're now well represented on that board. So appreciate the board approving that at the last meeting.
Okay, you have any comments? Question, that's some good numbers there, a lot of good research, good information.
This is great information. Appreciate you covering this for us.
Sure will. Moving on down, general business. April Ham, request for Dave Mark.
I was contacted by some representatives from Mark in County. They're interested in facility. It's been on a month-to-month because it was actually signed in twenty-two. Fired and would like to renew lease. Just have a suggestion if we could, and I'm sure they're going to be okay with this, to get it on that fiscal year rotation with our budget. Tation with our budget. Just for information today.
Okay, moving on down. Appoint a recreation committee and I'll take that one. Uh, owner of recreation committee, we need a chairman to be the spokesman, I guess, guide that, guide that committee. And I would uh, I would appoint Garrison Wagner to that, to that seat. Do we need a, need a motion on that for that appointment? Okay, Garrison will put him on the, on the chairman on the recreation committee.
Chairman now.
Oh, that one.
Okay.
Am I correct?
I don't think, I don't know if it's ever functioned with the chairman.
Sure think we need one, Bill.
Yes, um, Mr. Chairman, uh, and the board, I think it's one of the things that rural counties, rural county government uh can do to extend the ability to provide an array of services to the community is to have board members act as champions for different causes, different actions. The depth of staffing that really sounds and appreciate Garrison stepping forward and being willing to take over the chairmanship role here. There might be other activities in the future that I might chairmanship. Ask you all to think about is your cause or a a a project or something that you really want to get really involved. It's sort of like being a uh champion for it. Stands what we can do, talks to the community. Going to accomplish what it is that we
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Moving on down, recreation committee update, Commissioner Garrison Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for that uh appointment. I appreciate that of taking my role on the recreation committee very seriously. Just to give the board uh a bit of an overview of what we've been discussing in our past meetings. Uh, I've invited uh several folks from Allegheny County Schools, Sid Carrier and Zach Bennett, the athletic director, and also Steve Mason from Allegheny Wellness Center. And we've tried to be, trying to uh begin coming up with collaborative ideas on how we can actually facilitate the construction of a community pool for the residents and for the youth of this county. Um, so I'd like to take a little bit of time today to uh present uh recommendations to the board. Steve has uh willingly put together some plans here. Uh, I can pass it around if the rest of the board would like to see it. Basically, it would be an extension uh or a new construction to extend the current pool uh out to a separate outdoor facility. And kind of the the purview here in the long run is to have a partner there that can help maintain and staff uh this venture. And while we help provide the funding and uh the means to make this uh happen for for the youth of the county. Um, where we stand at the moment, we still have three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in SCIF funds that are mandated to be used for the construction of the pool. So it would be recommend, the uh recreation committee's uh recommendation to this board that we take those funds and go ahead and go out with an RFQ to find somebody who's qualified to put together the plans that can actually bring this to fruition. We had reached out to the folks that had, uh, I think the the name was Boomerang uh of the company who had provided some of these plans for us in the past. And just to give you an idea, they gave us, I think, ten or eleven site evals for about thirty thousand dollars. We came back to them and said, would you uh, give us some in-kind consideration here and reevaluate the Wellness Center site? And they said, yes, we could for fifteen thousand dollars, but I just don't think that's a fair price, given that they were charging us three thousand dollars a unit uh in the site preparation uh in their original study and then want, and then jump up, you know, five hundred percent. I just don't think that's uh uh fair to us. So I think it would be appropriate for us to put out an RFQ and see if there's uh other qualified individuals who'd like to take part in planning this facility.
So we've heard the request for RFQ.
On the agenda.
Information.
Information.
Think about that and I guess it'll be back in two weeks.
Have it on the agenda for
Okay, moving on down, general business, budget amendment, April in.
Your package you have uh our DSS, this is ones that have come into
Motion to uh approve the budget amendment for DSS, Celine reimbursement.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor? Four oh. We'll hear it, April.
And then the last thing that I have for finance this morning, we need to, um, there was a change in a uh gas Gatsby requirement, which is governmental account last year. And any type of long-term lease that we have actually has to be budgeted in our debts. So what I'm doing for this current year is transferring the amount that's left for DSS, both the buildings that we have leased, office space, our debt service. Actually see that in the proposed budget.
Motion accept. Motion second, any further discussion? Not all in favor? Four oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on down, county managers comments, Mr. Bill Shepley.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you. We uh have been spending almost our entire time on department heads. I mean, it's been, uh, it's been interesting for me to see that the uh see each of the managers what they think they need and possible expansion of what they do uh that they are requesting. And of course, at this point, we're just doing once rather than than actually what what's going to happen. So we're we're going to be comparing that and it's not too far off, but it's been, of course, there coming down. We're doing about what, twelve hours of nine to twelve hours each week of budget reviews. And we've got another two weeks? Three weeks, another three weeks to go before we're ready for the next page in that process. Um, another thing that's happening is I I've made some structural changes uh to the organization. There will probably be a few more structural changes just to that we're set up in a way that that from my perspective is the most efficient way for us challenges that we have. Nothing, nothing major, just making sure that responsibilities are balanced and that we don't have to the wealth around them. And we fill a couple of gaps that we have. We do have a couple of gaps. What about that? Gaps in the talent of the people, gaps in the experience that we need for someone such as grant writing. And uh, we are uh very pleased that the school loan closes tomorrow, right? Her work's been April and her say that we've got those are the major things I
Thank you, thank you, Bill. County commissioner comments. I guess I'll start there. I'm always picking on somebody else to start all the time. I just want to thank the college for all they've done. It's the the numbers to say here, it's impressive to see what's what's going on and and the schools in line with the college. I I know a couple of ours, Garrison himself, got to go to Staceville and see the Paxton Patterson labs they've got down there. And hopefully that can be implemented in up here in all three schools. And and that's a good, a good tool to align what you guys are doing in the trade sector also, you know. Y'all doing a great job over there and and it's uh, I'm glad glad you're here and we appreciate everything you do. Apple pie festival's coming up. I can't remember that date. May something. May the third, there you go, be right there. Just want to thank everybody, all employees for the job they do and and uh we appreciate each and every one of them. Garrison.
I don't have a whole lot to say. Again, I'll echo that uh comment. Thank you again for being here today, the folks from Wilkes Community College. Uh, you're a major part of this community and we recognize that significance that you bring to the table. And you know, while we're speaking about the community, I'd just like to take a moment to recognize our county manager, Mr. Bill Shepley. He's taken time out of his, you know, personal schedule to be present at uh, you know, the school board meetings and the town council meetings. And I think that really says a lot about, you know, who you are as a person and who you are as a manager. And I think when we're all on the same page, that we have the potential to accomplish what we really need to, to give our youth the best chance at a, at a great step forward. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Garrison.
Okay.
Yes, I just wanted to um circle back on the, the uh Wilkes Community College. I know that Mr. Rogers was saying he really appreciated our support, but the feeling is mutual because this is a very big need in our county and we really appreciate y'all's input, uh, your investment, your support. And uh, we'll try to partnership. Hopefully this will be a long, long time that we can partnership for. Also, I wanted to thank Missy again. I'm sure they probably had to pay her to come back today. But anyway, twenty years of her time in that office, which is not a very, can be sometimes another very pleasant place, but at the same time, a big need of the county of people like Missy in that position. Want to thank her again for that. And um also I do, do want to um, you know, to mention some more um support for our manager. I know he's new. I know that uh a lot of things are different. You you've got to go walk through all those different things. And I think you're doing the right thing with that. But I also have a lot of respect for you know, I I know sometimes you ask our advice and sometimes our opinion about things, but also I I have a lot of respect for you making your own decision and I, you know, I could sway you one way, somebody sway you somebody else. So my thing is, is keep, you know, looking forward and and figuring out all the pros and cons and weighing out those decisions in your own way. But yes, you take all the information you can. That's sort of the way I do is, you know, get the fours and the against. And then at the same time, you know, you make your own opinion and I would respect that and I respect that about you. But um, I do think, you know, it's like we say, a lot of times there, you know, we may have these little things that pop up here and there, but we have a ton of really, really good things in the county going on. For a perfect example, I, you know, things happen and events happen in our lives. It puts, from time to time, it puts life in perspective. And um, I sit on the board um to the DSS board. And I have a, you know, I have construction, have three or four crews and have a lot of things going on. Have these little complaints here and there with sometimes with homeowners that usually is resolvable. But you sit down in that board and you listen to things that's going on that you had no clue about. And people's lives and things. And if you realize, we don't have any problems. I mean, individually, some of those little problems that people think they have, but so I I do think we have a, a ton of really, really good things going on in the county and I look forward to more good things. And I look forward to springtime, which usually brings a lot more activity. So uh, and again, not to forget to thank uh the many of our employees, uh, some of which is sitting here that we really appreciate your time and, and um your care for our county and your work that you put in every day. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Timmy.
I really appreciate the community college up here and I know people in the county do. And my biggest thing I like about it more and all, it's so close to the high school, the kids can walk over. That's a big plus right there. I think most everybody in the county sports community college, hundred percent.
I agree. I agree with Timmy about county manager. That's a tough job and and every decision doesn't always make everybody happy, you know, and but all of us at the end of the day has got to do what's best for the county. And that's uh, that's the way we all try to operate and try to go, you know. We certainly appreciate what you're doing. I'm a year and new, been here, what, three, four months? And it's all coming together. We appreciate it. Got a request for a closed session on General Statute one, four, three dash, three, one, eight, dot, one, one dot, A dash, five, personnel. That's for a motion going closed session.
I'll make a motion going closed session.
Motion second, all in favor? Four oh. I appreciate all of you. Appreciate you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.